Okay, it is 5:30 and I'm gonna call this City Council Bond Work Session to Order. And I believe, Ms. Barnes, you're gonna make the presentation for us tonight?
Yes, sir, I will.
Floor is yours, sir.
As my computer is warming up, gentlemen, I have sent to you a copy of the bond ordinance as well as the wording on the ballot. I'm sorry, let me type in my password real quick. I can't think and type at the same time, talk and type at the same time. I've also sent you Eric Mahas financial analysis. His financial analysis for the, it all came out to like $21.9 million with all the issuing fees and all the items that we've talked about. It comes to 10.33 cents per $100 valuation. That's $8 million for the Rec Center Library Senior Center. We're referring to that as a combination use building. We also have approximately $5.3 million for the downtown renovations. We have $2 million for, I'm sorry, number C is Bellknap Street from the railroad tracks to the Mason Street, which is, and the document's coming up, $3.7, or I'm sorry, $3.86 million. The trail is, oh, I'm sorry, dead gum. Hang on, I'm looking at an old one there. All right. Item A is the $8 million, my screen just went blank, is the $8 million for the Rec Center. The item B is 5.383 for the downtown improvements. Proposition C is Bellknap Street, it's $2.159 million from the railroad track to Mason Street. Item D are the construction of First, Second, Fifth, Sixth, Cage and Swan Streets for $3.7 million. And Proposition E is $2 million for the trail system. Again, that comes to 10.33 cents per $100 valuation. The Proposition A increases the tax by 3.88 cents. Proposition B by 2.6 cents. Proposition C by 1.8 cents. Proposition D by 1 point, roughly 1.1 cents. And Proposition E by roughly a cent. That's a total of 10.33 cents on a $100 valuation. That's where we stand at this point. We are willing, we, whatever is the will of the pleasure, of the council.
Alan, you said 10.33, maybe I booked it the wrong one, I'm showing 10.61 cents.
Where are you seeing 10.61?
On the spreadsheet that you sent to us today that was scheduled one, dated 1/14/21.
Yes, sir, the white column all the way to the right shows 10.33 cents. Up to, at a level, it goes up to 10.41 on wrapper.
Yeah, I see where you're at. I was looking at the maximum at the bottom.
Oh, yes, sir. Also, keep in mind, gentlemen, this is calculated with no increase in ad valorem valuation, and it's also at 3.15% interest is the very conservative calculation.
What is the market rate right now according to our bond?
Just under three.
And this is without any projections of the roughly $45 million of construction we have under now?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we could step that down?
Potentially, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The financial advisor is going to do it as conservatively as possible, but keep it within the realistic range. Actually, yes, sir.
I think we've got a few more questions maybe up here.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions and maybe I missed a meeting or two and y'all may have discussed some of these things in those meetings, and if that's the case, I apologize. One of the things was the multipurpose facility, combined use, I think you'd call it.
Yes, sir.
It will have a gym or two gyms?
At this point, it is my understanding it will have two gyms.
Okay.
That's our intent. I don't know what the dollars work out to, but our intent is to have two gym floors, a library and an area for senior citizens. Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's one of the questions that I have been asked already, if we're gonna have a new facility, what's it gonna be able to provide? And two gyms is important, especially since we don't have enough rec floor spaces as it is with only one, two more would certainly enhance that capability.
You're right, sir.
Another question, one of the things that we, as a council, talked about initially was the potential to rebuild Long Street.
Yes, sir.
I don't see Long Street on here.
That is correct.
And I wonder, and again, that may have been discussed, and I just wasn't at the meeting because I did miss several.
Yes, sir, it was. The council decided to include Long Street in a utility project because so much of the street will be torn up with the replacement of the water and sewer that it was felt that the entire breadth of the street would be torn up and thus the repair or replacement, as it were, of the pavement would be done through the utilities.
Okay, so that'll be a part of COs?
Or other.
Or revenue bonds?
Or other ways to finance.
Okay.
That's correct.
As a part of the funding source that's gonna provide for those, which is an enterprise fund?
That is correct.
As opposed to the general fund?
That is correct.
Okay. The downtown revitalization?
Yes, sir.
And the Bellknap projects, do they overlap?
They do not.
Okay, so.
Now, are you talking about the, from the railroad track to Mason Street? No, sir, they do not overlap.
Okay, so that will be two separate projects?
Yes, sir.
If they're both approved?
That is correct.
Okay. And I guess the last question, the trail, which is the last proposition, there's so many options and so many variables in that, is that a point A to point B, or is that so many feet of trail, or how do we explain that to the people that ask questions about it?
There are several strategies that can be, that can take place. The build out, the complete build out of the trail is approximately $6.5 million. If we can find a grant source to fund the build out of the trail, we would have up to one-third of the trail project as a match. That would be huge in obtaining that grant. Now, the grant that we've obtained the last two phases are not available to towns over 5,000 people this year, and so it'll probably be another two years before that's allocated again. However, Parks Wildlife has grants, we don't have to rely on Tax Doc for the grant.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, something specific? Cheryl, good?
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Barnes, I've had several conversations about this, and since, for me at least, this will be the first GO bond issue that we've done, since I've been on the council.
Yes, sir.
So some of the questions that I've been asked have to do with the SOP. So is it standard procedure to be kind of nebulous before the election's called and then try to hammer out and work out the loose ends after the election's called?
It is not unusual. However, what I would recommend is that the council decide which projects because the wording that you guys have been supplied has been written by our attorney and does pass the Attorney General's muster on the way the bond should, or the way the ordinance and the ballot should be worded. If you'll notice, the ordinance is much more specific than the ballot, and it's because of the length of the ballot and the length of what can, what needs to be explained in the ordinance. At the end of the day, if there's a conflict five years from now as to what the intent of the council is, it would go back to the ordinance rather than what was specifically said on the ballot, so long as the ballot accurately reflected what's on the ordinance.
Kind of along those same lines, the, so we don't have really any kind of hard and fast construction dollar data estimates?
On the streets, we have the opinion of cost.
That one, that one, I'm talking about specifically the multipurpose or combined use center and the downtown revitalization. Those are the two that I'm specifically addressing.
Yes, sir, the downtown revitalization is an opinion of cost by our Public Works Director. After studying the drawings that we've been provided, not the ones that I just handed out, but the ones up to today. And the multipurpose building, I did it too, combined use building, that's the number that the council decided upon. Actually, I believe there's been some conversation that that number may be a little low, maybe more in the $10.5 million range. I think, I think we're talking with Mr. Virgin about a design build at this point, and I think because of all of the pieces and components of a design build, I think it's gonna be a little bit more expensive than we are, than this anticipates.
So, again, that's kind of one of those details, and that's, because once, once the election's called with that language, we're pretty well locked in.
You're bound. That's correct.
So.
Yes, sir. We. There were a couple of folks that were involved in a discussion today about this. Would y'all like to talk about that?
That was a big concern of mine, Mark, definitely. The overall cost being underestimated on the front side, we put it on the ballot and we look up and we can't build what we need to build for the money requested. That's, and I still have some concern over it at that $8 million, I did. Based on the 35,000 square feet that we've been presented.
30,000.
35,000.
35,093. I have, I have the exact drawing in my truck.
Yeah, okay. But that's, there's some reservation there. My thinking would be to up, up the ask?
In the, in the discussion today, looked at, had two different, we've had two different basic four plans kind of presented to us and pointed out, he pointed out where, you know, where there was some overkill in the bigger, in the larger of the two. And so, felt pretty good that that 35,000 is adequate. And we, you know, we discussed the added cost of dirt work at the, if it were to go on Long Street, that added cost and the retaining wall, and that's with the, and the parking that just is not, hasn't been, wasn't in the original number that we got. We talked about some other things, the gym flooring and what that would, about what that would cost, and at the end of the day, when we discussed all of those things, we said, is 8 million done? He said, if you stick with the 35,000, I think it can be done.
Will that, will that match the renderings that are being produced? I mean, or can I have another set of renderings done to?
It should fairly closely match.
Yes, that was, we discussed the facade, you know, is this, is this number, you know, a metal building? I mean, just, you know, metal veneers that you, is it exposed? And he said, he used a technical term, but he said basically that design was based on similar, which is Splashville. So it's gonna have, it'll have a masonry.
So in terms of direction, anybody else have?
Is this the time to discuss the location of that facility?
No, you can, I mean.
If it's approved.
If it's approved.
We ought to have a general idea.
You're gonna have to take something to the voters. You're gonna have to have something to take.
What are you gonna build and where?
What does it look like, how much it's gonna cost, what's inside?
And where is it?
I guess it would be appropriate.
Well, and I've had several people ask already, you know, because people are talking about this, it's not a secret, and they're asking questions about what are we gonna build and where and what's it gonna cost and, and all of those things, like I asked about, is it gonna have one gym or two? That's one of the specific questions I was asked.
Yes, sir.
The top of the hill is certainly out of the flood plain, but there's some significant topographic issues to deal with. When we discussed this, it was before your time, I think it was before most of the council members' time, we talked about putting it down at the base of the hill on what I would call the east side of Splashville, because the thought was that the main entrance to the park is gonna be there rather than coming in by the old rec facility.
Yes.
And that would put it down there, close to Splashville, because that's a newer attraction, and also closer to what we anticipated at that time being the main entrance or the entrance that we would promote. At one time, we had a rendering of what the master plan for the park, and I don't know where that is now, but it showed that as being the main entrance.
Yes, sir.
And that, and we've talked about both locations, and I don't know that we have to hash that out tonight, but we need to have an idea about what we think we need to look, what we think we need to move toward to be able to explain to the voters. I don't want to end up with questions being asked as we did with the recent slab that was poured.
Yes, sir. The, the discussion on location, we'll put it wherever the council wants it put, number one. However, in the discussion of the downtown revitalization plan, there is a plan to connect the city park with downtown. That could be a very key part of the connection between the park and downtown if it's on the hill. If it's across the park, you lose some of that synergy that you have between the downtown and the park. Again, yes, there is a spot to the, I guess, east of Splashville. I'm not sure that there is 35,000 square feet, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know how big it is. There is a hill issue there as well. Again, it's wherever the council decides they want it put, most logical two locations are the two that we're discussing.
One of the thoughts was that we would use some common parking between Splashville and that to help ease some of the parking concerns and space requirements also.
One of the things we talked about this afternoon in looking at that is really there, we talked about cost trade-offs, and there really wasn't gonna be much of a cost trade-off with the still need for additional parking that we would have to put in down there, and talking through asphalt costs and those kind of things, as we discussed in our meeting that it was on the six-lone way, half a dozen another, wherever you stick it.
I think another thing that came up, Alan, was functionality. If you're gonna keep the rec hall, the existing rec hall structure, and you're gonna build a brand-new facility on the other end of the park, then you have a lone standing building that functionally isn't a part of any potential events, or if you have a tournament, you're asking people to go across the park. I think that from a functional standpoint, it potentially, and then to the point that Jason said, I, you know, it's not a, it's not a bid that I guess I can use anything with, but the additional cost of parking near Splashville was gonna be similar to the dirt work costs on the hill.
If we, if we put it on the hill, are we gonna take the top of the hill off and bring the elevation down closer to the existing facility? There's a significant change in elevation from, from one to the other.
No, it sounded like we were bringing dirt in.
For your roadway, you'd have to, I mean, you'd have to, I would think you would have to bring that up.
Hmm, but that's, that kind of negates what you're saying though, because there's such a great difference in elevation, people are not gonna wanna walk that, they're gonna park down here, and then they're gonna get in their car and they're gonna drive up the hill. So, but that still may be the best place if you're trying to connect it to downtown, it certainly is.
And to the existing structure.
Yes, Mr. Nix, also, there is a thought in, in making a fourplex of the baseball fields. You know, we have the two fields and the very small field. If we do that, then about two-thirds, yeah, three-quarter, not quite two-thirds, of the Splashville parking will be taken up with those baseball fields, so the Splashville parking is gonna have to move, that road is gonna have to be straightened out. So there may be some issues with that and having joint parking with the two, so there actually may be a parking lot here and a parking lot here for the two facilities that may not be able to be shareparked.
Okay.
And if you'd like to, I've got a kind of a rendering of what the baseball parks are gonna look like as a fourplex, so I asked our GIS guy to take those two and flip them around, and he did that.
Okay.
If this is a time to speak up, my, I'm highly in favor of putting it next to the rec hall for continuity purposes to downtown if we're spending this money. And we talk about parking, part of this is gonna be the flow and movement of people walking and making this, where people can walk back and forth to the downtown area to eat lunch, to shop, to do things between some of these, some of these things. And to me, that is definitely the location of my preference.
I'll say too, I know it, it seems like we have a whole lot right here at the end, what about this, what about this, what about that? And I think that's pretty natural because these are, these are big decisions, but I think we have to remember too, that this process started in spring of 2019 with the facility study that showed us where our shortcomings were. You know, this, this combined use building came as a, as a suggestion out of that, that I think we got for the first time probably in October of 2019, and suggested that location as a possibility. The streets, I think, are pretty simple, that's been an ongoing thing that, there's not a lot of question there. We need them, we know what they're gonna cost. You know, the downtown piece has been an ongoing thing for, for about a year, I guess, and had a lot of support when that started, and so it's just only natural that we'd let, you know, let citizens decide if that's something that they see value in, but, you know, even in that, I think about four and a half million, that's probably not an exact number, but something like that, is all in pavement. I mean, it's, it really, it's a street, it's a street improvement, it's a street project that, that will help beautify downtown, but it's a street project, so, you know, it's a, there really has been, and I have said a few times, it feels like we're moving awful fast, but really, when I go back and look, we really haven't moved very fast on this. This has been a long time, and for years before 2019, it was talked about for a long time. So, you know, we can keep talking about it, or we can do something with it, and I think now's the time to do something.
To that point, I kind of agree with you, except if somebody comes and asks me, what's in this combined use building, I can't tell them. I mean, I can say, well, I think it's gonna have two gyms, I think it's gonna have some breakout space, it's gonna be some poppin' space, but I can't tell them. So how do I convince them that this is something they need to do, that they need to support? If I can't, it just seems to me that there's, I mean, just sitting here, there's, there's been a lot of questions asked about various aspects of it. And two things happened last week, and I, this is not a criticism of Mr. Barnes at all, because I think he gave an honest presentation, but he gave a presentation of this at the seat of board meeting last week, and it was, well, I kind of think this is what's gonna be, but we're not sure, because the architect in Waco is working with, we've got the design built here, so it's just kind of, kind of nebulous. And I, I just flat don't feel comfortable telling my neighbors that, I want you to support this, I think this is great for the city of Stephenville, but I can't really tell you what it is.
We will have four plans.
Okay.
We'll have elevation rendering. We'll have all those by.
I don't know, councilman, you know, as we're trying to settle on a dollar figure, then some of that's affected what those floor plans and stuff maybe look like, and so I think we're centering in on what we can accomplish with a certain dollar.
And so, I thi, I think we're centering in on what we can accomplish with a certain dollar figure. So, we will certainly be able to produce the renderings that you're talking about to get those out to you and the public.
And, and it's y'all's opinion that we've got time, from the time we call this election until the election occurs, we've got time to get all of that stuff nailed down.
We will get the, we will get the factual information out to the public as soon as we have it. Yes, sir.
I guess that's my only concern, because I mean, I don't want to be on the debate ballot, but just the timeline, I mean, that's moving quick. And as far as, I'm not so much worried about the, the design or any of the stuff. I'm just worried about educating the public on what we're doing here. So, I mean, it's going to require a lot of hard work and a lot of us trying to go out there and pound the pavement to educate folks, because that's what it's going to take to obviously get this thing passed, is education. So, that's our biggest time constraint, is the education part of it.
There, it's up to the will of the council when they have the election. It can, we only have two, excuse me, we only have two, uh, election days that are available. That's the second Saturday in May and the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. Used to, we had four a year, uh, and, and then, actually, I think at one time we had six, then it was four, and now it's two. If, if it's the thought of the council that it would be in the city's best interest to, to wait till November, we could wait till November. We don't know what's going to happen with the economy between now and then. We don't know what's going to happen with interest rates between now and then. They may go up, they may go down, we don't know. Again, I'm not espousing that it goes in November, I'm not espousing that it goes in May. My job is to give you options. I, I'm kind of concerned about, about the, the getting the, I'm not concerned about getting the word out. I'm getting, I'm concerned about getting the word out to enough people to understand. Our goal as staff is for people to understand what's being asked for. It's not to vote for something, it's not to vote against something, it's simply an educational process. Can we do that? Yes. Have we talked about, uh, doing, uh, videos? Yes, those videos will be ready to roll February the second. A website should be ready to roll February the second. It, it's, it's our intent to, to have as much information available to the voters on February the second as we possibly can.
So, I heard, I heard Ricky, you said that you, the streets you were good with, the downtown you were good with. Y'all already indicated that there may be a shortfall in that eight million dollars?
I have a concern, yes.
Yep, and I, I heard y'all both voiced that concern as well.
I heard, I heard the person who's giving us the drugs, say, stick with the plan and then, uh.
My concern with design build is in essence, you lose a little control of your budget, because a gentleman tells you, I'm going to build this for X dollars, and he has put the finishes inside of the X dollars you've not been able to stipulate. And that may be okay. It may be great, and it may not. And when you look at the per square foot at thirty-five thousand, it seems a little light. I mean, I, I'm all about saving money. If anybody who, who knows me will, but sometimes you've got to spend.
So, I'm just, I'm, I'm just looking and listening to what everybody said, and you've got this, we've got two million dollars allocated to the trail, that's simply a leverage buy. I mean, it, it won't finish the trail in any way, is that correct?
It will complete one more phase, yes, sir.
Do one phase?
Yes, sir.
But the total is six, something?
Six and a half.
So, I wonder if you think about incorporating that, too, from the trail into the rec center, combined-use building to, to cushion that? Because the, the worst thing I think could happen, Nick, is that you, you, you set this building out, and you, we budgeted eight million, and it really comes in at nine and a half, and we're taking stuff out.
My biggest concern.
The, we're taking, we're not putting furniture in, because we ran out of money.
My biggest concern. Or you've told the public that you can do something for this, and in turn, you can't. Now, you've not known the public any favors.
What happens if you, if you budgeted for ten million, like you were suggesting, and it comes in at eight?
The order? It won't. You'll get a ten million dollar facility. If you tell them you've got eight million, and this is what we need, they'll either build it for that or they won't. If you tell them we got ten million, they're going to cost you ten million dollars.
You could pay it down, you could pay the bond back. I mean, you cannot redirect it.
Depending on the, the call.
Yeah. You couldn't spend the ten million outside of what that proposition says you were going to spend the ten million on that project. And then, but I think to just the point, there is, I don't know, if you structured on the front end so that you could, you could buy that call early.
When's the last time we had a bond, though, where we couldn't buy the call early? I don't, I don't call any prepayment penalties on any bonds we've done.
Uh, there normally are, uh, there'll be a, what I like to do when we sell COs, just do a five-year call. Just so that we can get them paid off early if we, if we want to, need to.
There could be arbitrage, there's a way to handle it to get it paid back.
What, what you would have to do is you would have to escrow the funds, or the way I understand it, you would escrow the funds, uh, to be paid on the call date. All funds and interest would be paid on the call date. So, if we did a fi, if we did a twenty-year bond with a five-year call, and we had ten mi, uh, we had two million dollars left over that we couldn't use on any other project, then, then that two million dollars would be put into an interest-bearing account that on the call date in two thousand twenty-six, we would make essentially a two mi, two million dollar payment.
If you structured the call date that way?
Yes, sir. Or it would be year ten, or whatever the call dated.
Thank you.
And I think you can probably do a shorter call, but I don't think that, I, I think it would cost way too much to do that.
I mean, it costs you money in interest and stuff.
A, a five-year call is usually affordable, um, but, but, uh, shorter than five years, there, the investors are seeing they're not going to give money back, so there's a concern.
What would be a projected build for something like this?
I'm sorry?
A projected build, build-out, what's the timeline?
Timeline.
I don't know about a design build, but conventionally, it takes about eight to nine months to get the construction plans, a couple of months to build, and probably eight, nine months to build a, a thirty-five thousand square foot building that's designed like I think it will be. So, roughly two years.
Would it be about the same on Bell and Upstream?
Yes, sir. I would think so.
Yes, for plan and specs, the construction would be about twelve to eighteen months.
It'd be similar to what we're looking at on Harbin right now, wouldn't it? The design and engineering and then?
It's been about a year on the engineering and?
Yes, sir.
Design.
And it would be the same roughly for downtown.
Supposed to be going back to me, for the mass purposes, you're looking for direction, correct?
That's correct, sir.
And, and if we wait, it will be a ten million dollar building that we could have got, right?
No, that would be, I mean, I'm in favor of putting it on May, though I think it's a short timeline. I think we're all going to have to hustle up to educate, but I think we can do it. And I think the ten million needs to be budgeted on the multi, whatever you want to call it, the multipurpose facility. It's my two cents.
What do you think, Jason?
I think that, uh, I think, I think I agree with your sentiment. The worst thing you can do is promise to build it and not have enough. You know, I don't know if that means doing the RFP at not eight million, or what exactly that looks like, but I agree. You know, I mean, we've got to have the details to, to iron those things out. I think that if we move mu, if we move it around, um, I think that the streets and the work that we've asked for on, or that we're potentially asked of the voters on downtown are very important for the development and economic growth of this community. So, uh, you know, we're going to have to reallocate or shuffle around, and I'm comfortable with that possibility of the Boss River Trail and moving that around to the rec center. But every, every moment we wait, it gets more expensive.
I've been doing a lot of research and getting facts ready to do exactly what Brady's talking about, you know, educate people. Ricky and I've had a lot of conversations, and it does feel rushed, and I've had people tell me, you guys, it feels rushed. Well, when you have public meetings and things are made in public, most of the time, questions get asked. What are we going to do with, with this building, or where are we going to do that? We have been working on this for two years with Hobbs coming in and looking at our facilities and looking at our needs. Lots of people have made trips to look at facilities and communities close to our size, like the building in Hewitt, to look at what we could do and what a budget would do that economically would make the most sense for Stephenville. We have dire needs in our senior center. We have dire needs in a recreation facility. If, if, if we didn't have the cooperation of our school district, we couldn't have some Spart events. And who knows when that could change? I don't see that changing, but that's, that's a fact. Our downtown has got more things going on in it now than it's had in years. And I think some of that's because of the excitement of things we've done and some of the things we've seen. And I think we've got the option, and this all goes to the voters, they can vote no on all of this. And, and if that's the way they feel, that's the way they feel, and, and we move forward. But I think we've worked to give a, a good plan that touches streets that are long overdue, long overdue. We've given a plan to touch downtown that I think will, and, and there's people that disagree with me on this, I think it could be a huge economic driver for our community. I, I truly believe that. I believe that when we spent the money with Scott Polikoff, because of what he's done in the communities that he's done. Just look at it. They took a leap of faith. Roanoke took a leap of faith, McKennie took a leap of faith, all those places took a leap of faith. And our, and, and the combined-use facility back to, to our facility. Our facilities are in terrible shape. Handicap accessibles, safety issues, over and over again. We've got a lot of those issues, and this is our chance to say, we've came up with a plan, we aren't, we have turned it into a forty million dollar multipurpose center. We, truly, we haven't spent a million dollars on having some fancy pictures and things like that that, that a lot of people do to get ready for a bond, because we've tried to be frugal in how we've done it, and present this to the voters and say, here's what we can do, and this is what it's going to cost you, but this is what it's going to do. And I think we can tell that story, and, you know, I'm willing and ready to do it. So, Mr. Barnes?
One of the things that Jason and I were just talking about, uh, if you recall, originally, we were going to have downtown in two phases, or, or in two propositions. We're going to have phase one in one proposition, phase two in the other. Upon advice of our, our bond council, we combined them into two, I mean, into one. There could potentially be an ability to combine the eight million dollar, uh, facility with the two million dollar trail that would motivate us as staff to keep the, the building at eight million dollars. However, it would give us that, that cushion where if it did come in at eight and a half, or eight point seven, we would still have money for trail, but we would also have the money for the building.
How fast can we know that?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Before noon.
Okay.
I guess I, I would just, I'm going to go ahead and say I don't think that would be something I would.
You don't think?
Not, not combining the two projects into one proposition.
What's your concern?
Combining the Boss River Trail with the rec center?
Yes, sir.
I think the main thing is, is I just, I don't see how they, I, I think they're two separate things. I think that, I think that's, I think that downtown revitalization phase one and two
Yeah.
is not the same thing as combining rec center or multi, multipurpose facility and the Boss River Trail. I don't think that's the same thing.
I'd have to agree.
I didn't touch on the trail, but I think the trail's an important piece. I think you look at what happened in the last ten months and how many people utilized that. And I think, given the voters an option to push that forward with a lot of local people who've done a lot of work to try to get us grant money, that it's at least we can give the voters the opportunity to say, yeah, we want to finish that. Because that, that makes, that would be a distinct feature of Stephenville, to have city parks connect to the downtown, to connect to the major university that would, that would help distinguish us from other cities, arcades, that we're competing with.
Based on that sentiment, really, all we have tonight is to, for you guys to give us the sentiment on, do we do eight million, do we do ten million, what do we do on the building?
I said it asked for more. Terms of, you know, what, what's best for the taxpayer, that?
We have someone who's in commercial construction regularly that says they can do what's been presented for eight million. If we authorize ten million, there's no question it's going to cost taxpayers ten million dollars, period. Could we have done it for eight million? Maybe, but, but we're going to do it for ten. You know, if, if we authorize the eight, they, they're going to build to the eight. And if there is some changes or something along the way, I mean, for goodness sakes, we, just because we don't have to borrow the money doesn't mean we, that we, just because we didn't borrow the money for it, doesn't mean that we can't spend the money if it's necessary.
That's correct.
And, and we're not, we're not talking about a difference of five or six million dollars that we're not a thousand percent certain on. You know, it's, it's not something that I ever liked to do, I wouldn't want to do it, but we do budget adjustments all the time, and I, I wouldn't be as concerned about whether or not we're actually going to get what we're, what we need at the eight million dollars, so. I, I think that's the only place that any of us have any real disagreement on is, is that center, so.
I see that point.
Yeah, I'm good.
Daryl?
I agree with Ricky on this particular thing. I think, too, we've talked about this, we've actually had a thirty thousand square foot facility, and, uh, I'm looking at the guy's signature here on it right now, and it was in a different location. And he guaranteed he could build it for forty-nine eighty-nine. In other words, four million, nine hundred eighty-nine thousand. Now, we're talking about a different location, which we knew the cost would be higher, and there were probably some costs with regard to parking and whatnot out of Splashville that wasn't taken into consideration, only the building was taken into consideration. And we also were told, and this has been going on for two years, we were also told that, that a location next to the existing rec hall would cost more, frankly, because you've got to deal with a hill. You've got to deal either going to fill, you're going to cut, you're going to do something like that. It's going to cause the construction to go up. So, when he comes back in and says he can do it for eight million dollars, and, and so we have somebody who is in the business that believes he can do it at that. I think, too, just like Ricky was saying, we deal with changes all the time here on construction projects, on, on, uh, whether it's well field or, or sewer line extension or, or whatever. We look at those things all the time. We figure out a way, and ideally, maybe a more unique way of, of dealing with those things. We also have a, uh, we have people in the community that are willing to also step up insofar as donations go to a multipurpose center like this to help fund, if not all of it, fund, uh, and by all of it, I'm talking about the, all of it. to help fund, if not all of it, fund...and by all of it, I'm talking about the...all of the equipment, the furniture fixtures and equipment, things like that inside the building, which is a significant amount. And in that, we need to take into consideration too. I think we can do it for...frankly, I have seen nothing that says that I think that we can't do it for eight million dollars. And I certainly think we can do that. As far as these other projects, this being located in a different place is a continuation of the downtown. We're talking about, we made a commitment, it's like Brandon was saying earlier, here to basically rebuild the downtown and make it look nice. Other communities have done that. We can do that here. And we can leave a...here a legacy for the community that will be something that people will be proud of instead of being a place that, "Let's get through downtown, you know, as quickly as possible." You know, and I just feel like that we have an opportunity here. Next year, it's going to cost more. November, it's going to cost more. I think we can put together a good education program to talk to the public about this. If we do these things as has been laid out here, it fits within the dollar figure that we talked about. And by that, I'm talking about that with regard to the tax cost, which was referred to earlier as ten-point-three-three, I think is what you were talking about.
I believe that's correct, yes.
And so it fits within that. That's something we have talked about, I've talked about. This makes, what, the eighth, tenth meeting? And maybe four or five workshops that we have talked about this project, these projects?
Yes, sir.
And trying to put this together. And what will the people get out of it? They're going to get better-looking streets. They're going to get a multipurpose facility or a combination. We're going to solve the problem with the senior citizens, it is a terrible mess over there. We will end up with a new library that will be the modern day, not the old stack of books, but a modern-day activity center, if you will, for people in this community. Right now, we have something that is...we can almost be ashamed of, to tell you the truth, and compared to what other cities are doing. And the third thing, we desperately need the recreation facilities. We have the one gym that was built in WPA days. I mean, let's face it, we're putting in hundreds of thousands of dollars to it, and it's needed, it's a historic-type building, but this puts in two new gymnasiums for us too. And we need that in order to attract those...the tournaments and to handle the people locally as well as the things coming in. I think it's a good deal, and I think that's what the voters want us to do. I mean, I think that's what they elected all of us to do, is to come in, "Let's make the community a better place." It's a quality of life issues, and that's what all of these things practically are. And I think it'll be a good thing. So I definitely think we ought to go with the plan that we've got and eight million dollars for the senior, the library, the recreation center, and let's let the voters decide. That they're the ones that are going to make this choice.
Mr. Nix?
We've spent a significant amount of time prior to tonight discussing, I think virtually all of these projects, some in greater depth than others, but we've discussed all of them. I think we all agree that they're projects that are needed. I think we have come to an agreement on the priorities. These are not all the projects that are needed, but these are the priorities of the projects that we need to do. There's going to be other things to consider once we start these, and we've talked about some of those other expenditures and the enterprise funds and other things that are not going to impact the tax rate, but they're going to impact the taxpayer. And I think all of that is a part of the package that we have to consider. I'm just like you, Mark, my greatest fear is that we get an eight-million-dollar bond approved and we can't build it for that. And then we end up having to scale back or try to come up with funding from another source, neither one of which is a very good solution as far as I'm concerned. But I also agree with Ricky, if we say ten million dollars, it's probably going to come closer to that because contractors have a way of knowing how much money's in your pocket. And we have to do this in public meetings, and that's just the way it is. And it appears to me that the majority of the council is comfortable with this, and if that's the case, I am going to go with the majority and say that this is what we need to do. But I'm going to ask the council and staff to work diligently to provide us with detailed information to provide to the voters, because we must be able to answer their questions to their satisfaction to have them vote for these different propositions. And if we fail to do that, I think most of them are not going to be in agreement with spending this kind of money and going into that kind of indebtedness for projects that they're not a hundred percent sure what they're buying. And I think all of us, if we go to buy an expensive item for our home or our vehicle or buy a vehicle or a home, we want to see what we're buying and we want to see what that money is buying, and I think the voters have a right to do that. And I think we need to be able to answer those questions and do so in a manner that's not confrontational, but do so in a manner that's factual and provide that information for them at their request. And if we can do that, I think the voters will support these projects because I think most of them will see the need for these also.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Nix, you bring up a great point. What we will do as staff, we'll prepare a set of talking points for the council on the bond, what to expect from the bond, what you can tell your constituents the bond consists of, and we'll have that for you Tuesday night.
Okay. So just to summarize, I think what I've heard is similar to what Mr. Nix heard, move forward as presented. Everybody pretty...you're okay with that? Is that the direction you needed, sir?
That is exactly the direction I needed, sir.
I would ask one thing, Alan.
Yes.
When staff gets together and they do this, you're talking about talking point. There's one thing that I found is very significant. If you can put together a deal that says just the facts, just the facts.
Yes, sir.
Here are the facts. This is it, this is how much it is, this is what we're going to do, this is what it's going to get. And do a one-page deal of just the facts.
Yes, sir, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Can you sign that, Joe Friday?
Yeah.
No, because he didn't say man. Do we have a comparison? I know that our existing facilities are extremely inefficient to operate. Do we have a comparison for what it would cost to operate the new facility versus what we're paying for the library and senior citizens as far as staffing, utilities, those kinds of things? We do not, I think that... I would think that maybe we can work it out, I'm not sure. That's a part of the cost, it's not part of the bond package, but it's a part of the long-term cost to the citizen. Right, right. I think we could probably look for a comparative building that's thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand square feet to see what their utilities are and then compare them to what we're paying for the current facilities. I think that would be helpful also for the taxpayers to understand. May not have that for you by Tuesday night. Well, but that's a part of the explanation process that we'll need to be involved in, I believe. Yes. And just remember, tomorrow at noon, I tuck and run for the foreseeable future. Jason, I think he just dropped that in your lap.
Well, good or done?
Congratulations. Yes, sir. And I'll be available to help.
Mr. Thorne?
Mr. Nix, I know we had...they probably weren't really in-depth, but we had some discussion on that in some of the work sessions. As far as the combined use facility, I guess it's the only one we've got that we're going to be talking about operations. But, you know, part of the intent behind that is that we're able to market for tournaments and that sort of thing. And so there's an idea, at least there, that there would be additional revenues that would cover that. Of course, the senior center, we're not going to have to operate that, so that should be somewhat of a trade there. I mean, that should be...there's not a huge difference in square footage, I think, for them versus what's going planned for this other facility, so. And then the same thing with the library. We've discussed, and it's not finalized, but we've discussed another use for the library, which, as my understanding, that's going to take the operation of that building and the utility cost of that building largely off of the general fund. So that's going to go away as well. So certainly there may be some increase, but I don't think it's going to be the same as if we're adding a new thirty-five thousand-foot footprint and continuing to operate everything we've always had.
Right.
So.
Correct. Mr. Barnes, anything you want to do with this pretty picture, or have you got everything you need?
I've got everything I need. I provided you with the picture that came in at five oh one today.
Okay. All right, if nobody's got anything else, we'll stand adjourned, it is six thirty.